Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, April 10th, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:00 PM and we are meeting this evening at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have LakeCam recording. Is anyone else recording? No one recording for the record. We do have a quorum this evening with myself, Mr. Wilder and Mr. Cabral. Hoping that the other two members will be joining us, but we will be starting this evening at 7 o'clock. And we do have Clark, Kathy Murray with us. I'm gonna take something out of order right now. We have an A&R plan for 71 Howland Road, Zenith Land Surveyors LLC, possible vote if you want to come up and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is John Romanelli of Zenith Land Surveyors in New Bedford. I'm representing Frank Ashley and his wife, who I think are just about to pull in the parking lot. What we are doing here is cutting an existing lot into two. Now Frank has been on this, holding onto this property for many, many years. It had some issues with an old right-of-way that ran through the property and there were other people that had rights to it. And back, at least a year or so ago, I drew an exhibit plan for his attorney so she could see exactly where the property was. Put this up on the board just in case anyone has any questions. Because if you look at the assessors map, you'll see there are two parcels on the assessors map and one of them is the old right-of-way.
Okay.
Frank's property is down here in the bottom of the plan.
Mm-hmm.
In red, I know it's a little difficult to see, is the old Woods Road that used to run through the former subdivision? Or it ran through the subdivision before it became a subdivision. Now these houses were all in here built and I believe there are nine abutters that Frank had to get his lawyer to get the right-of-way extinguished. And I brought a copy of the judgment just so you could have it for your record.
Okay. Actually, you want to give it to Kathy?
Sure.
If you don't mind?
It's a Superior Court judgment that came down in January of this year. Basically extinguishing the rights of the nine abutters that had rights to go through Frank's property. Basically, it's not in use anymore. It was an old logging road and if you were to use it now, you'd be going through people's houses and whatnot. So, but it took a couple of years to get it extinguished because they had difficulty time finding some of the owners. But now that it's been extinguished and we have that judgment, it's been recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. He would like to subdivide his existing four acre lot into two building lots. It was actually originally part of the Sherwood Drive subdivision, but the right-of-way used to be right along this dash line in here. So now that it's been extinguished, we're gonna cut this into two. Basically, this means all the zoning requirements. You've got 80,000, 178 with no wetlands on Lot 1. Lot 2, under 9,770. Total frontage is 465 between Howland and Sherwood. You've got the front yard circle, 160 diameter and you've got all the other requirements.
All right.
Pretty straightforward.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board?
What's the frontage of Lot 1?
It's noted there's 226 at the 41st setback line. Actually, it's a little bit more than that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We did start right at 7:00. Sorry, gentlemen.
Very good.
All right, so we're reviewing the A&R because we took it out of order. So unless, did you, did either of you have any questions about the A&R? I know this is actually the first implementation of the new Form A.
Yes.
And I'd say from looking at the submittals, it's done, it's served its purpose because I don't see any, I don't have any questions, comments, or concerns myself. And if no one else does, would someone like to make a motion to approve this A&R?
You guys all set?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the A&R for 71 Howland Road.
Yes, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, back to agenda item number one. We have a public hearing. To amend the Town Code, Zoning Bylaws, Section 270-6.7, Site Plan Review. A purpose, two, to amend by adding "use" to design and layout. To amend Section 270-6.7(c), applicability requirements by deleting 7 and replacing with, if the proposal involves expansion of a building or intensification of use that would result in a change of traffic in the area, noise, parking, lighting, et cetera, by a commercial, business, or industrial use, to also add activities not subject to site plan review. To amend Section 270-6.7d, Submittal Requirements by adding 19, A Statement of Proposed Use. To amend Section 270-6.7e, Review Procedure to update various administrative procedures regarding this submittal process. Votes to be taken. And I will read the notice of public hearing. Legal notice. Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Lakeville Town Code, Zoning Bylaw and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40a, Section 5, on Thursday, April 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station, Meeting Room 323 Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed amendments to the Lakeville Town Code, zoning bylaws as follows. 7:00 PM, Public Hearing 1. This article would amend the Lakeville Town Code, zoning bylaws, Section 270-6.7, Site Plan Review. A purpose, two, to amend. And actually, I just read all this. I guess. To amend "use" to design and layout of certain developments. To amend Section 270-6.7, Site Plan Review (c), applicability requirements by deleting 7 and replacing with, if the proposal involves expansion of a building or intensification of use that would result in a change in traffic volumes in the area, noise, parking, lighting, et cetera, by a commercial, business, or industrial use. Two, also add the following activities not subject to site plan review. One, proposals that involve no change in use or level of activity. Two, internal building modifications to a non-residential use that do not affect the scale or impact of the existing use. Three, a reuse of a premise for which a site plan has already been conducted, provided the new use is not different in type or impact. To amend Section 270-6.7, Site Plan Review (d), Submittal Requirements by adding 19, A Statement of Proposed Use. To amend Section 270-6.7, Site Plan Review (e), Review Procedure to update various administrative procedures regarding the submittal process. So that is the legal notice. If someone would like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is open. Do we have anyone who has any questions, comments, concerns on this? As I just read, these are some minor edits to site plan review. We're hoping to just strengthen them and it was from some feedback from our former town planner that we were able to come up with these minor edits to hopefully strengthen and make it more straightforward in the future. So without any further comment or questions, would someone like to make a motion to? We've already said it to the select board.
Recommend approval.
So we just need to recommend a town meeting?
Yep. Make a motion to recommend a town meeting. The article that would amend the Lakeville Town bylaws.
Second.
Recommend approval.
Recommend him of approval.
Okay. We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Would someone like to close that public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Number one.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, public hearing number two. This article would amend the Lakeville Town Code, zoning bylaws, Section 270-2.1, Terms Defined, Accessory Dwelling Unit. To add the following, four is subject to 760 CMR 71.00, Protected Use, ADUs.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
We have a motion?
Second.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is opened. This is just adding on to our ADU definition to have it reference the state law that it is coming from. So when those guidelines or laws change, this will already reference those items.
And we won't have to change it every time they change it.
Exactly. Hopefully. Hopefully we don't. And so, anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? No? Okay. Would someone like to?
Make a motion to recommend approval?
It's a town meeting.
It's a town meeting.
All right, we have a motion? In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Someone like to close that public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing number two?
Aye. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearing number three. This article would amend the Lakeville Town Code, zoning bylaws, Section 270-7.8, Accessory Apartment by deleting this section in its entirety. The proposed amendments to the Lakeville Town Code, zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Lakeville Town Clerk's Office in Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. By appointment only. So.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing number three.
Thank you. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open. This is just going to delete our existing accessory apartment bylaw because now that we have ADU, we don't need the more stringent accessory apartment bylaw because that bylaw actually required it to be attached to the existing dwelling. The ADU guidelines are a lot less stringent and it can be separated part of the existing dwelling. So it doesn't need to be attached to it like the accessory apartment bylaw. And I think this will also sort of relieve any conflict between the two. And we know that Title V still applies. So anyone who has an ADU is probably not going to be able to have an accessory apartment as well without redoing their septic. So it seemed like a straightforward removal of this existing bylaw. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? No? All right.
Make a motion to recommend approval at town meeting?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearings are closed. And these will be on our town meeting. John, last time, last in fall, I know you helped me present them.
I can, I can do that.
Yeah? I don't know if this, if you want to think about it, which one?
Doesn't matter. You can pick. I can pick. I'll do the two small ones or you do the one long one or vice versa?
Okay.
Whatever you pick. It was a choice.
So.
All right, so we can discuss that further off the record. But all right. Agenda item number five, public hearing. Site Plan Review, 10 Harding Street, Continued to this evening upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by Lex Development, Inc. for the construction of a proposed 13,300 square foot building, associated driveways, parking areas, and utilities. Possible vote. Good evening. All right, if you want to just state your names for the record?
Timothy Ashram from Riverhawk Environmental.
Hello?
Bob Rego with Riverhawk Environmental, Civil Engineer.
Welcome. So we had a standard set of conditions that was sent to you all to review. We did get some feedback from your attorney. They were sent to our town council and there are a number of them that I think we should go through and discuss. All right, so.
Is this the edited version?
So yeah, in our packet, Kathy was good enough to supply us with this for discussion. It kind of narrows it down to the items that were.
Cheat, cheat.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I think that was the comment that your attorney had put in that email.
Well, so actually, so we have, this one is from Kathy. Then we have your attorneys as well. And we did get.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Feedback from a civil engineer in regards to a question about one of the items. So let's start with number one. It was okay. It was minor. Number two, for discussion. So you're looking for a fixed number for the surety. It has been standard for us to go with the $10,000 per acre of disturbance. Assuming you're only gonna disturb around an acre, $10,000 seems reasonable because that would be the same as what it would be.
Say we were gonna disturb at half an acre. Just, you know, would you have to pay $5,000? Does that how it work? Is it prorated back or is it?
Have we ever prorated?
We've never had it where it was less than an acre.
Okay. So that's never come up.
Okay, and have you guys been doing this surety for a long time? Requiring that on the private sites?
Yes, we have been. So ever since we got a standard set of conditions that we worked through and then I know for a little while we didn't have a fixed number. I think it was when I became chair, we kind of looked back and saw what we had been doing previously and we wanted to just keep it consistent.
Yeah, I think the previous planner had implemented that.
Okay. But I think it was different on some things and we just decided to stick with straightforward $10,000.
Okay.
So it has been.
A few years at least, right?
I want to say about a year.
A year?
Yeah. I know it's been a long year though.
Okay, yeah.
13 Main was $20,000.
Okay.
It's a bigger.
Larger. Right, larger the site, you know?
Because I think we went off of county. The county storage was $10,000 per acre. I think that was the one that, one of the ones that we compared.
Yes, yes. Which they actually didn't follow through, but.
Right, right.
So could we move on? If we just said, yeah, $10,000 is agreeable and keep that as a condition?
So that was what your attorney sent to us?
Yeah.
As opposed, but he removed the part that said.
Per acre.
Per acre.
Yeah.
So just the $10,000. So as long as the board's in agreement, can we move on to the next? Is that okay?
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine, yep.
Yeah, okay. So the next item for discussion is number three. If the board wants inspections on the state. So this was the one that pertains to. So your attorney suggested, he said, I think, no, I changed to review of the as-built plan. This is private property. The applicant's engineer will be out on site during his construction if the board wants to specify what needs to be inspected and by whom, I think it should be specified in the decision. So the way it reads is the applicant shall provide, oh, sorry, wrong one. The applicant shall submit a check in the amount of $5,000, which will be held in a 53G account to pay for the review of the, now you have it as final as-built plan prior to the endorsement of this decision or the issuance of a building permit. We did check with our peer review. So it's not just the as-built and they did let us know that typical construction observations we conduct for other communities include initial visit to ensure all erosion control measures are installed and operational prior to any construction. These would be monitored during subsequent visits. Observation of drainage installations, bottom hole of before systems are installed and then again, prior to them being backfilled, we would observe structure and pipe installations, not every piece, but representative check-ins. This is obviously specific to each project, but usually four to eight visits. Review of the subbase material prior to paving. Review of binder cores, pavement install. Review of top cores, pavement install. Review of sidewalks, subbase prior to install. Review of sidewalk paving install, in-pavement and not concrete. And final punch list, as-built review. So those are the items. So it's not just the as-built that we would be looking for and it would be, we'd been using peer review to do those final reviews.
Slightly, you know, because I do also do work in a lot of other communities and it's not typically required on private sites to do that amount or in-depth inspections of construction of private property. I mean, there's no, we're not gonna look for the town to accept the roadways or make any acceptance of this site in terms of the construction quality. So I don't know why we'd be held to construction inspections from an independent peer review engineer.
So attorney Russell's comment was, this is up to the board. If inspections are required, then reject the change. So that's what, up to this board, whether or not.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
So you know, what we're saying back is, you know, I obviously hired an engineer to go ahead, design, go through the peer review. We made the changes. Now the engineer is gonna go out and be inspecting the project. If Board of Health wants to come out and look at the bottom of the hole of the drainage, like he's the qualified guy to look at that.
So they wouldn't do it. That's why we would have our peer review do it.
But my point is, is I'm already paying an engineer. Why would I? It's in, it's private. It's not like the town's gonna be accepting this road or anything like that.
Right, but I mean, obviously, you know, it's something that could create runoff or some other issues to abutting properties, et cetera.
But we already did the design. I mean, they're gonna be as-building the plan.
Like condition of pavement? He's talking about reviewing pavement course, sidewalk installations. It's all private. It's just, you know.
A plow mark in the pavement. Like that's my property, like.
Right.
You know, that's his. On a town road that's being accepted, I've seen it before where a berm got messed up with the. It's really not applicable in this. I don't believe that any private sites that I've heard of have had to this extent.
Wow. Oh, you know. Yeah, I mean, it's not typical. Like I said, I do work in a lot of communities. Tim does build a lot of developments. So it's not commonplace to have these inspections as part of a site plan review.
So this is, it is one of our standard conditions that we have been using.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else has any.
So this is just, I was just checking the amount of the $5,000. So you guys weren't, you guys weren't, I guess, blocking at the $5,000 in the thing and for the engineer, for our engineer, for our town engineer or town third party, what do we call it? Peer review, I'm sorry. Reviewing the as-built, but it was just going out and doing the inspections throughout? So it was?
Yeah, we just, because it is gonna be remain private property and the condition of it is, you know, gonna be important to Tim and not the town. We didn't see the need or to pay a peer review consultant to go out and make inspection of pipe installations, sidewalk installations.
Well, you're still putting the money, you guys, you're, well, you're trying to have an issue with us putting the money in the account for them to review our as-built?
It's for the as-built. Yeah. Right, the final, you know, so they could go out and say, yep, they did what they were supposed to.
Everything's fast-moving. Everything's fast-moving. Like, so the drainage, the drainage basin on this is huge. Like there's no way this drainage basin can get a huge hole and then built. It's gonna be like built as it goes and to have somebody keep coming out there. These guys are a mile down the road. They can come out anytime to be able to do something like that. But that, you know what I'm saying, Bob? With the drainage basement? It's gonna be opened up, let's just say, in 10-foot increments. They're gonna build it. They're gonna do what they're gonna do and they're just gonna continue like that because it's just that big. You cannot do that and it's all sand. So I just don't see a need of paying two engineers when we already did go through all the peer review and everything.
And then, you know, say, you know, he's installing pipe or the contractor's like, we have to call for an inspection and wait for the review engineer to come by at his?
It's fast-moving and, you know, it just, it's a project holdup. So what happened on 13 Main Street? Because I know that none of that got done, right?
Well, so there were discrepancies between.
So yeah, so what?
Plans and the as.
Well, we had another property, which was a private property that was just completed was that even when we got the as-built, when we went out there, you mean, there were discrepancies between what was on the as-built and what was actually in the field. So again, I think the intent of that, the intent of this is to, so that we could have the, you know, periodic inspections. Again, we're not looking, I know you're saying you're not paying them, but that, you know, I mean, there still will be some checks and balances that have to be done. They're not gonna see those inconsistencies with the eye when they're going out. I mean, I'm talking like levels of pipe and stuff like that. They're not gonna see that till the as-built. The as-built is what's gonna tell the true story of the project. If they go out there and look at an open hole or look at the pipes in the ground, they have no idea at that point until the as built's done. And they review it at the end and know if there's an inconsistency.
Right, but I think that's the problem, so if you have pipes put in and they're not the same pipes that were shown on the plans and then you have to then what, tear it up to put the right size pipes or?
Yeah, the location, but he's not gonna know the location of the drainage when he goes out and looks at, he's gonna look at pipe bedding and go, yeah, they're installing the ADS twelve inch pipe that we said and it's bedded correctly and it's installed, but they're not gonna know location. It's not gonna be surveyed, they're not, they're gonna, they're gonna be in the same boat that, that we are in the installer, we'll give the as needed survey layout to the installer and, and the drainage will put in the right thing.
Well, so the thing is, so, so I'm sorry, so you're the engineer for the applicant.
Yep.
Right, so peer review works for the town, okay, so to make sure that it's all done as it should be, and so but there have been problems where the as built are not what is there, so that is something that we're looking to create correct by creating conditions like this that help ensure that what is in the ground, yeah, exactly, what, what was approved, what's in the ground matches what's the as built. So that's why we have to have the peer review do it, we can't just have the, the engineer do it.
If I may, if I may, right, the, the final as built, right, the final as built will show the location of the drainage structures. It will show the location of the piping.
But, but a peer review still has to go out and.
But they won't know the location when they're standing out there, that, that's by survey, they're not gonna know if the pipe is slightly off by a foot. If it's at the wrong elevation.
Not until the as.
Not until the as built, that stuff will get picked up on the final, they wouldn't pick that up prior, they would, they won't go out and do a pavement inspection and say, oh, um, there's three inches of pavement there, that, what, what does that do, that, that? You know, that's one of the things they're saying they inspect there and inspect sidewalk construction. All that stuff.
Well, those are examples of, of items that they would check.
Well, that's, they listed as the inspections, right? Um, the final as built will show the parking space locations, it'll show the lighting, it'll show it'll show all the things that we came in front of the planning board for approval for and, and they'll be able to check that they're, you know, consistent with the plan. And, and that, and then, then the peer review, we're okay with the peer reviewer looking at the as built, so hey, they didn't, you know, they, they didn't do this.
So, so what happens when they come out the end?
Yep.
And the as built doesn't match what was approved, are you guys gonna rip it up?
Well, well, they're not, so, so they're gonna, say they make a pavement inspection, they're gonna go out and they're gonna check the thickness of the, they're gonna check the location of the curb. They're not gonna make sure that we have the, the required number of parking spaces, cause it won't be striped, you can't tell that stuff until final as built. You know, they're not.
But we still need, we still need peer review to review the as built.
I understood and we agree, we're fine with that, we're fine with that, and then you could say, hey, this, this is differs in this way and, and how do we deal with it if it, if there are any differences, you know?
Cause that's gonna happen regardless if the, if they go out.
Yeah, if they make intermediate inspections along the way, they'd never pick, they'd never pick up those inconsistencies.
I also believe it's, it's for them to go out and, and verify that i- items are in, are being installed. In order, cause like, you know, part of it's that they have to, what? Prior to the endorsement of the decision of the issuance of a building permit, right, that was the, the idea, so a final as built.
I mean, that can't happen, because we need a building permit before all the site work can get done, clearly.
Oh, no, but they're saying the check has to be issued prior.
Sorry.
Uh, the, the required prior to.
Right, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, prior, yeah, so. Final as built.
Before we issue, before a permit gets issued, which it's not even the money. It's the, it's the timing and the, and the, and, and, and I'm just don't see what it adds to the board, it's not gonna, it's not gonna pick up any inconsistencies between the design plan and the finished product.
So I think that's a matter of opinion, because as we've mentioned that, that we have recently experienced discrepancies.
Right, but did they pick that up in the intermediate inspections?
No, but, but some of it, some of it, I'm just thinking, I'm sorry.
So.
I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking back, you mean, again, I, I don't know if it's the inspections, but.
I mean, he made, he made a good point, because it wasn't during those, because they missed those inspections and that's why we, they picked it up at the as built. And that's why now we have to go through and have peer review go back and review all those items. So I feel like it's a benefit to you to have these done before.
Really not, I, I understand.
Instead of, instead of holding it up at the end.
But it's really, you know, we're gonna do it, right, I mean, this is it's, my bills.
It's not, yeah, I mean.
We're gonna make sure it's done correctly.
Yeah, um.
And they need to stamp the plan saying they did it correctly. And then at the end of the day, the as built gets passed into the peer review, peer review says, this is off, why is it off, you know?
Right, right, and. Yeah, it's just, I don't think the inspections they listed, those intermediate inspections in any way could pick up any inconsistencies that are gonna be for the final design, but now if they go out and count the number of chambers in the infiltration area or something like that and check for, you know, they can see subsurface stuff that, that maybe wouldn't be shown otherwise, but.
Do we have a list of the, what are, what we have down as the required inspections?
Well, that's what this email from.
That's what they typically do, right, but what's, well, what, what we meant by when it was, when it was written into our conditions, I was wondering. This was a typical construction observation, right, so.
So I, again, so.
No, I, I understand, but so, I'm a mechanical engineer by trade, right, I do jobs, we do site visits periodically during construction to see things are because when you get to the end and they're doing a final punch list.
Yeah.
Realizing that the pipe, there's no hangers on the pipe, doesn't help you.
But I have a question, do you get after your client or do you have a peer review come out and check your work?
Well, no, cause we're, we're the, we're the engineers, but we're not, the town does not, but the town does not have engineers. Right, but we're coming out because the contractors are installing it.
Yeah, and that's.
I understand that's what you're doing.
That's what we do, we'd as built the drainage systems, we'd make sure they're in the right location, it's exact same situation.
He's doing the checks and balances, making sure.
On the checks and balances.
Right, but for billing inspections, the town will still send out, you still do a rough inspection and you have to do a final inspection for, for your trades, right?
Correct, for buildings.
Right, you can't, you can't go beyond, you can't wall up your walls or put up your ceilings until your rough inspection, your in-wall inspection is, so how do we know what's under your site? You're not installing it, if we're not looking at it during.
Well, that's why we said like an open hole, the Board of Health, who's, who's a soil evaluator in town, comes out and looks at the open hole, when I tell you that this thing is as big as this parking lot here, it needs to be done in phases, I don't need V and T to be on the clock standing there watching the guys dig every ten feet and put chambers in and do that.
And, right, no, I, I don't, I don't think the, and, I'm sure if you will, I don't, I don't think the the intent of, of the inspections is to hold up your schedule saying that we're coming out here, we can't come out for another two weeks, you have to wait for us, I think the idea is that we're, you're holding it there for the, if we if the board or if the town requires those inspections to be done, that, that, that check is in there to cover that cost for peer review. For them to go out and do the required inspections. Now, I know you guys didn't block, I get, you didn't block at the price of it, you just, you blocked at when they're being done, required inspections would be the final as built.
Right, right, right. Right, cause, cause we felt, you know, that the idea was to make sure we build what, what you, what, you know, what.
No, and I, and I, I understand you're, you have to provide like an affidavit or, you know, construction control, right?
Right, yes, yeah.
It's, it seems silly for me to pay two engineers to do the same thing. I, I don't, have no problem with them reviewing that as built at the end, I can pay for that. And that shouldn't be ten, five thousand dollars, but if the guy's going out there making however many inspections, pavement and stuff. That's, I'm paying two engineers to do the same thing, guys, and then at the end of the day, nothing's gonna get picked up, honestly. Until the as built at the end, if they say the grades of this and that, and that's what I'm paying him to do.
Or, or.
That's all I'm saying, like, it, it really is not.
Install twelve spaces and we have eleven spaces or, you know, things like that, or lighting was supposed to be installed here and it's not, or but it's not.
So, I mean. The way I see it. If we, we can, we can go this route, we can, we can keep it as, as you have it, but if something comes up, like, you're kinda kicking the can down the road, so.
Oh, yeah.
Like, that's, I feel as though that's.
Yeah, we just make sure.
The risk that they're gonna have to take then, they just wanted to be the as built, and if something's found at the end, it has to go back and cause holdup, then that's, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Another suggestion is to leave it as it says with inspections and whittle the list down of.
Specify the inspections.
Yeah, well, that's.
Exactly what you want done. It seems kind of like.
That's all I meant by that, was like, when we wrote that, was there, was there a list that we already had?
And try to maybe get it within that five.
I mean, I don't think we should.
Five thousand, you know, what can you do for that?
No, I, I.
That's just my, I, I.
I, you know.
I know everyone thinks it's like easy and it's simple, but, you know, most people are cashing in their retirements to do something like this. And I don't need to pay two engineers for it, guys, I mean, if, if you could, if you make me, I don't think I have a choice. But it just doesn't make sense to me, I think the as built at the end, if there's something wrong, Bob says, Tim, that pipe's off a foot. Then we, then, then we have to own it, you know, you guys are holding it, I ain't getting occupancy till it's right.
We're gonna be doing that.
You guys own it.
And we're gonna be doing those as built of the, of the drainage system while he's building.
And it's, yeah, before it's back from, clearly, so we're gonna know at that point if it's good.
If there's an issue and Tim will be able to modify and rectify it prior to things.
Yeah.
Things like paving and stuff like that, you know. He wants a parking lot that's gonna last and it's only to his benefit.
The drainage, the drainage would be a big one to review, but, I mean, are we, do you wanna go through this list and pick out the items that we wanna make sure?
I think that would be a good.
Are included, or do we wanna just go to the as?
The one that I actually may have the problem with, because that's.
Yeah, that's where you gotta.
A little bit more substantial.
No, I mean, you know, like Bob's gonna be doing the as built, like, we can't be sitting on site waiting for someone to come show up and say, okay, we can continue on with the project. I mean, it, it's real, I'm not just, you know.
No, no, I, no.
No, 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 I understand that, I'm just.
I mean, I don't think we should make it difficult for these guys.
We are trying to clean up an ugly site, let's not forget that.
I, I, I have nothing against this project, I just wanna make sure that it's.
No, I understand, no, I do understand.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna give you, uh, too much leeway and then have the next person, you know, who's.
But we know that we own the as built, we own it, it's a problem.
What specific items did we have a problem with on thirteen Main Street?
Well, I mean, I don't really wanna get into it.
There was a, there was a list.
But, I mean, we've seen the punches.
So, I think we should, Madam Chair, focus on the items that Kathy had specified, we can go over them and then cause we, we have to move on here, there's more stuff here.
I know, there's a lot to get through on this.
This is probably the bigger, bigger ones.
We've got the initial visit.
In the last six.
Do you wanna bring them all out?
The last six.
Well, I already did.
Oh, you did, okay.
But.
That should be, that should be okay, right?
What's that?
The last six items really shouldn't be the problem once, it's the first two, right?
Right, cause, but he's saying that the drainage is the one that they have the biggest issue with.
I mean, pavement, I don't need, I don't need an engineer on site watching my pavement, I just put it down, you know? If, if they call for three inches and they happen to do two and three quarters, it's not on the road.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm not saying, I'm gonna say, can we save a quarter inch?
Right, and Tim, Tim, Tim has to, he, he wants to own this parking lot a long time and keep it in place, so it's to his benefit to, to to build it according to the spec.
Yeah, so I think.
What?
The first one, the initial visit, to ensure that all erosion control measures are installed.
I mean, couldn't that be Board of Health agent?
Yeah, and not only that, but that's Tim's subject to a stormwater pollution prevention plan that we've already filed.
With the EPA.
With the EPA and all those constructions have to be measured in place, we report this thick, the documents that.
Yeah, I'm.
There's no wetlands nearby, is that, you know?
Yeah, I'm, like, if there was wetlands, it would be the conservation agents out there, I mean, there's nothing here, my neighbors are, my neighbors love me. They're like, can't wait until this gets done, I, I don't know the last project that my neighbors are like.
Okay, all right, hold on, let, let the board just have a little time to, to discuss.
Again, I'm, I'm not, I'm sure, like, I'm not opposed to how they wrote it, obviously, like you'd said, it's kind of on them, but I think maybe moving forward, we definitely have to come up with a list of inspections.
Right.
That would be required.
Do we need to go back with them?
No.
I mean, this is, so this is coming for Bill and Thomas, this is who we, you know, one of the, um, peer review that we have been using. And this isn't, you know, just for Lakeville, it's for other communities as well, these are the items that they typically include.
They, they make a lot of their money based on peer reviews.
Yeah.
Well.
I mean, I know the next town over, we gotta project.
So, is the board okay with the final as built? Or do you wanna pick out a few of these items right now that we wanna make sure that someone's on site for our, how do you feel?
Um, I'm going to ask John, based on his engineering expertise, because this is a unique situation, so John, I'm kinda relying on your expertise on this. For this situation.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think again, the erosion control measures, right, but I guess that's, like we said, that's everything, that's like, it's gonna be throughout, but again, the initial ones to have them installed and then I know the, the drainage, but we, again, I, I know what he's saying, like, you don't wanna be held up by like, waiting for peer review, I don't know how that, how we.
Yeah, we would observe.
Navigate that to.
Structure and pipe installations, I mean. And I think that's the problem.
Say that again.
So.
For instance, on number, number two, we would observe structure and pipe installations. They've got their guys on site starting and, and we're, they're waiting for our people to come in and oversee it, right?
Okay, so let me just interject here, so number eight. Number eight already says the applicant shall notify the planning department in writing by email two or more working days prior to the following construction milestones. Commencement of, of work on site, installation of stormwater management facilities, installation of trees and other landscaping fe- features. Prior to the final paving of the parking lot and drives and substantial completion of work. If, if there are, if we're already asking them to notify us at these timeframes, wouldn't it make sense to have? Get inspections at those times, right?
Within those forty-eight hours.
But, I don't think. You know, that, I don't think that it's necessary for the landscaping for them to be there, or, um.
Prior to final paving.
I think maybe this, cause, but the stormwater, once again, and then final paving.
Yeah, maybe if we could, even on the stormwater, if I may, say, you know, they can do the bottom of hole inspection upon the initial you know, installation, to make sure we're in the correct soils and we're in agreement with us, which we'll be doing and then but it's gonna be done in phases and do they have to come back three times?
Well, it's gonna be multiple times, like you said, like the piping's going, there's a lot of piping, so they wanna observe the piping during it, just one. That's all I'm saying. If they make, if they wanna come out and look at the open hole, again, that's what, you know, we're, in two weeks, we're throwing a park out there to verify those soils with the Board of Health agent, and just, you know, it's all sand out there, it's all sandy soils. So, there's really no worry with that either, but the Board of Health agent.
John, do they have to review all of these paving projects, I mean? I mean, it seems like that could be a.
I don't know, we have done all those facilities, but it's usually when it's roads and they were before, we're gonna release lots, we have them go out there and do a peer review, but we're not, we're not doing that, right? Like, it's not to hold back.
And that, that's.
So it's not a public road.
Right. Well, even with the private road, still, we still hold it back, so they can't release for lots until the, until like the storm management and, and the roads are installed.
Right.
Those, those roads all have the possibility of being accepted by the town one day, so.
No, 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 not, not the private ones.
Not the private one.
But there is other homeowners that are gonna be buying lots on that, so you guys are ensuring that the homeowner, the unsuspecting homeowner is buying that lot is okay, this is just singular site.
All right, shall we try to move on in the gap for this one?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's move over a little bit, we're going in circles.
Yeah, okay. So number eight is the next one. Changed by writing to email, which there's no issue with, but then, uh, what is substantial completion compared to completion? Was the question from Amy Quessel, because, uh, their attorney inserted the word substantial completion, so what is, what? What is the difference between substantial and completion, what is he intending?
I think maybe, you know, one case is, say it's, um, Tim finishes the job up and it's January thirteenth. And he wants to get occupancy, but they can't, um, I don't even know if this one applies, can't install trees at that point.
Yeah, plan.
Yeah, landscaping can't, we're probably in that timeline where we're gonna be ready to occupy in the winter, potentially, and landscaping just can't get done, clearly. But that's what the surety is there for, I'm assuming, right?
So that's, that was just, uh, yeah, and I don't, I don't think that this one is that, if you don't wanna.
Yeah, but you're, you're only just emailing us anyways, you're not, it's not, it has nothing to do with anything.
Deal whether we, he, you know, attorneys.
So, are, are you okay with leaving that out, or, because it's not?
You're just emailing us, telling us that you're done.
Yeah, yeah.
So it is, it's not.
I mean, fine, move on. I mean, I'm done, I want my money back.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, right, yeah.
So instead of substantial completion, let us know when it's complete?
Yeah, sure, I'd email.
Because substantial is left, uh, up to interpretation.
Right, yeah.
So, we'll remove that?
Yeah.
Um, all right, the next item, ten. Um, discussion adding no limitations for inside work, inside of the building, is not planning board's jurisdiction, so we can't add that. And then, so we, we could add construction of the site shall of the site only, only, as opposed to the interior, so the site only, okay? We can put site only shall be limited to seven AM to five PM, a day through Friday.
Maybe put exterior on that, cause site is inside.
Well, the, no, the site.
Site work.
Site only.
So we're only, our, our purview's only site work, we don't, inside the building, this has nothing to do with inside the building, other than saying you need to get a building permit.
Yeah.
I know you're saying, I don't think it'll hold, this won't hold you up, but again, the, the hours, the work hours will have to be taken up with the billing department.
Well, so, I mean, we have the, yeah, cause this construction hours are seven to five, Monday through Friday, eight to four Saturdays. And no work on Sundays and federal holiday, federal and state holidays. So. Yeah, so we can't insert what, uh, your attorney there had inserted about the work inside, but we can include the word construction of the site.
Could we, could we, could we, could we put construction of the site work only?
Site work.
Is that better? No, I mean, the job site's the job site, but construction of the site work, site work, okay?
Site work.
Yeah, site work and exterior.
Okay.
Exterior building.
Exterior site work.
Yeah, yes, do you wanna add that word?
Because exterior is what's gonna be bothering people.
Right, so exterior, even if you wanna add that, Kathy, exterior site work only, take out that.
Then take out what they added.
Okay, eleven. Um, okay, so now.
This, this one I can probably add some clarity to get, so we don't get too involved, but thi- this, we probably, I think the attorney thought maybe we would have to do some grass basins or something, but I don't think there's gonna be any landscaping or anything that's gonna hold us up. This is, um, with the stormwater shall be functional prior to occupancy permit.
Okay, so, so now I have a, I, so we have an issue with this, so.
That'll be.
You had, do you have our conditions?
We're fine with thirteen, I think.
But no, no, so, so, so we can't do it as it's, as it's written, do you have the original conditions that were sent to you?
I do, yeah.
Okay, so number eleven has been, has re, has been removed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And instead you are given, going with thirteen, but the problem is, for your thirteen, um, you're saying prior to final occupancy, but we can't, so we can't hold occupancy.
Yeah.
Um, so eleven actually makes more sense to keep it and just add stormwater management system to it because it says all drainage facilities associated structures, including pipe looming seating shall be completed to the satisfaction of the planning board prior to the issuance of any building permit, unless appropriate surety is agreed upon, which is sufficient to complete the infrastructure. And that is what we have been going with, so if you're not able to do those items and you put the surety in place.
But, but let, let's go over that, it says all the drainage has to be in, all drainage facilities.
Or surety, so that's why you put the surety down, because we can't hold.
Which we've already talked about at the beginning, correct?
We can't hold.
Surety's already.
Okay, we can't hold an occupancy permit, so that's already.
Talked about in item number two, is this surety that's mentioned in here?
So this is a surety to complete all of those items, which what we've been doing is we'll get a, a, a number from peer review. They'll give us that number and then.
Before a building permit?
Well.
They, I mean.
We can't hold an occupancy permit, so.
No, it's saying building permit, I can't do nothing with the building.
So number thirteen, though, you're looking, so that's why I'm saying, you guys got rid of eleven, but we can't go with thirteen because you're asking for us to withhold the final occupancy permit.
Thirteen is okay, thirteen, thirteen.
But it's not okay, it's not okay with that, that's what I'm saying, is you guys have changed thirteen.
No, we're not gonna modify thirteen, we're gonna.
At all, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna waive what your attorney had wrote?
Yes, 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 he thought we might have to do some landscaping.
Cause think of the looming and seeding being done before I get a building permit, that means the final coat's on the parking lot, I can't be building a building with the final coat on the parking lot cause you're not gonna do the looming and seeding to the final.
And, and every, yeah.
That's all I'm.
And before you can even start construction of the building, eleven's saying you have to have all the stormwater in, including looming and seeding.
Yeah.
That, that, that comment, that, that just doesn't.
But that's why if it's not done, that's where you have the option for the surety.
But that's before you get a building permit to start construction of the site.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if it's an occupancy, it'd be a little different.
Right, I mean, that's a, that's just going and applying for a building permit with a building permit plan.
Yeah, but.
So Tim would have to build the whole site and not know if he's gonna get a building permit.
Yeah, there you go, the perfect example. Well. It says the issuance of, oh, I guess, yeah, the issuance of any building permit.
Yeah, I just, I mean, that, that, that's, that just, that, that. It doesn't make sense.
No, I can't imagine that was.
The way, the way it's worded, or the, or the structure of it, because it's saying you have to install all the stormwater facilities, all looming and seeding has to be done, prior to going and applying for a building.
That means all my landscaping's done and everything. Obviously, you guys understand. So. You won't be doing any site work before you apply for a building permit?
We will, we will be, but, you know, the looming and seeding's certainly not gonna.
No, so the looming, and that, and that's fine.
And then some of the drainage may not be done, like, if the building comes in.
No, but I mean, that, that, the idea was that you would, you're just, we're looking for the surety that way, that we know that you're gonna finish.
Oh, you're gonna build the entire site?
Yeah, that's, so the surety, that number. Well, you can't, well, some, the site might, some, you know, I mean, like, and it's, the intent is that if you can't, if you, you know, to build the site, yes, but if you can't, then you have to have that surety in there, that way that holds, that we know you're coming back to do it, right?
So what's this say? Wait, but this is a building permit, that's not issuing an occupancy permit, he can't pave until he puts the stormwater stuff in.
Right, but the building commissioner does not want us withholding an occupancy permit.
We can't hold, we can't.
But if it's not paved.
So you're gonna withhold the building.
So that's why it's the surety as opposed to a building permit.
But say the, say the site's not paved, well, it won't be paved, potentially.
Well, so what if he, yeah, it's, it's just, um.
And, and the Beals and Thomas comes in and says, it's a hundred thousand dollars to pave this site, we want a hundred grand because it's not paved to get his building.
No, you're not gonna, no, you could, you could obviously challenge something that's ridiculously overpriced.
But if it was a hundred thousand dollars.
But it's gonna be very expensive.
If it is a hundred thousand dollars to pave, I gotta put that money in surety before I get a building permit, before I can get money from a bank, you understand what I'm saying? I need a building permit, guys.
You guys are, by, by that comment, the planning board is withholding a building permit.
Are we asking for surety for the entire site?
No.
Just the drainage?
Just was.
All drainage facilities associated structures, including pipe looming and seeding, shall be completed to the satisfaction of the planning board prior to the issuance of any building permits, unless the appropriate surety is agreed upon and sufficient to complete the infrastructure. It's not the paving, we're not looking at you to put money up for the paving.
But how do you loom and seed without paving?
Here's the thing, I.
Huh? To loom and seed, you pave everything first, you don't.
Right, but you, but, I. Yeah, there you go. You don't loom and seed pavement. No, but you can't loom and seed up against the pavement, though, that's, that's.
You gotta put it, you gotta set all your curb, everything has to be done before you loom and seed.
Yeah, so, here's the thing.
So we, so.
A building permit's needed.
Time out, time out, okay, so number twenty-one.
I think it's a mistake.
Is. Ha- has to do with landscaping, and council had, um. Said that there should be a time requirement, and I think six months is a fair one for that, and that has to do with the.
Six months from occupancy, I'm assuming, or?
Within six months of, uh.
Most likely occupancy, right?
No, well, so it wouldn't be. Completed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, yeah.
Yes.
Within six months of occupancy.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yes.
Like, because if we get done in January, we can't land.
But so.
Right. I'm fine with that.
So I feel like number twenty-one takes away that, your, your problem with the, um.
No, no.
Landscaping part of it.
It just, it says in number eleven that you can't get a building permit until it's looming seeded.
But it's the, it's the drainage facilities, is, is what? Oh, drainage facilities.
Drainage facility and associated structures, including piping, looming and seeding, anything associated with the drainage.
Oh, it says looming.
So that's, when you're saying looming.
But associated with the drainage.
But guys, it, the fear, okay? Going to put in, let's just say it's a three hundred thousand dollar drainage system.
Which it's close.
I don't know, right?
It's gonna be that much.
And then I don't get a building permit, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, but, but the, the surety is that you're gonna put the drainage, right, so, you do work on the site work, you're gonna put the drainage facilities in. But you don't get a chance to do the looming and seeding, but you have to put a surety up to, so that you're gonna come back and actually do that later, we're not asking for the surety of the rest of it.
I love, I love what your thoughts are, but.
Well, that's what we wrote, but that's what we have.
Drainage not being in without a building permit, you don't get money from banks without a building permit, is my point, they're not gonna give you a, a money on a site. So, without money, there's no surety that can be put up, because you need money from a bank to do this. I think it's a misprint with the building permit, occupancy makes the most sense, I understand you can't hold up occupancy, but. The ASBIL comes in, correct, and the, and the ASBIL is reviewed.
Yeah.
But you can't get occupancy before that, that's reviewed, am I correct?
Substituting the word building permit for occupancy, it just, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work with the sequencing of construction, and like, and Tim said.
I mean, you must, you're in the business, you understand, like, you can't go get money from a bank without a building permit, that's like, if you ever built your own house, it's not happening.
Right.
It's not happening. It's, it's, it's something that's impossible, that was the one I seen, and I was like, this is obviously a misprint, because it makes no sense whatsoever.
Okay, so I'm gonna circle eleven thirteen, we'll come back to that, number seventeen. All signs installed on site shall comply with the layfield sign by law unless zoning relief is obtained from the applicable municipal authority. They added, unless zoning relief is obtained from the applicable municipal authority, um, that was already mentioned during our previous discussion. Is that okay with, um, everyone on the board? Yeah, okay. Seventeen's okay, number nineteen. Planning board or its designee during regular business hours shall be permitted to enter the site within forty-eight hour written notice, which consent not unreasonably denied or delayed, and until ASBIL plans are reviewed by the board's engineer in order to conduct site inspections as may be required by this decision. The only item was. Uh, instead of. Unreasonably denied or delayed, uh, if we could just have that as one business day. Because I don't know what unreasonably denied or delayed is, but one business day would at least take into account any weekends or, or something along those lines. So, replace. Which consent.
You guys, yeah.
With, uh, within one business day. And until ASBIL plans are reviewed by board's engineer. Okay, all right. Uh, so that's nineteen, number twenty, subgrade excavation for all new stormwater management basins and or stormwater recharge systems shall be inspected by the Board of Health Agent or designee of the planning board, prior to the placement of the required fill material and or finished su- surface material, we wouldn't ask the Board of Health Agent to do that. But the town, our town council, um, recommends designee of planning board, which would, that's consistent with, um. What we have been doing with. Peer review.
So we're removing inspected by the Board of Health?
Correct.
And changing it to.
Designee of the planning board, yeah?
Yes.
Which is for the.
Bottom of the hole.
Of, yeah, the, of the, of the storm.
Subgrade excavation of all new stormwater management basins and or stormwater recharge systems.
The open hole, I love.
Yeah.
Prior to the placement of the required, uh, fill material and or finished surface material. Okay, all right. Uh, twenty-one, all construction shown on the site plan, excluding landscaping unless otherwise noted, must be completed uh, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, this is the one that we kinda jumped to, and instead of saying excluding landscaping, it should be including, because you're getting that density bonus based off of landscaping and design. Uh, so we do need to make sure that landscaping.
Do we, yeah.
And that's the one where.
We just talked about that with the.
Six months, six months.
Six months, exactly, so must be completed.
Yeah, must be.
Yes, within six months of occupancy permit. Okay, so twenty-one.
Yeah, that's plenty.
Uh, twenty-four, any proposed changes from the approved site plan or additional site work deemed substantive by the board, uh, building commissioner shall be presented for review by the planning board, the board shall determine if there's a need for a public hearing, and shall then act accordingly on the changes, approved revisions shall be illustrated, um, on the ASBIL plan to be submitted to the board. But we don't wanna, if it's substantial, we don't wanna see it on the ASBIL, we wanna set, we want a new set of plans, if it's minor, it can be on the ASBIL, but if it's major, then it would be on a new set of plans, so that we make sure that what's on file is what's there.
Okay.
Is, is everyone okay with that? Okay. So minor on the ASBIL, um, anything major would be a set of plans.
Yeah, so, minor on the ASBIL, and then any, any, any major would be another public hearing type of?
Well, a new set of plans to be reviewed.
Okay.
No public hearing.
Not a public.
Not unless it, you know, not unless something comes up from another board that requires you to change the site plan, that would make you come back before.
Yeah, it already says that if it's substantial, then we could determine whether or not it needs to be a, a public hearing. So. You're okay with that minor on the ASBIL, but if it's a major, substantial, um, change.
So again, it's, it's gonna be any proposed changes from the approved site plan or additional site work deemed substantive by the building commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Shall be presented for review by the planning board, so if the building commissioner comes back and says, hey, this needs to go back in front of the planning board, he flags, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else that's.
Moved over twenty feet.
Anything else that, that's.
You know, moved over six inches, we don't, you don't need to come back, you just have to put it in the ASBIL, it's just that, if he comes back and says, or if the building commissioner comes back and says. You know.
Okay, so you're okay with that one, okay.
Yeah, yeah, by the building commissioner.
All right, twenty-five, they wanted to delete it, because there's no wetlands, makes sense?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Uh, twenty-six. So it seems okay, there was nothing from town council on this one. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. So we're okay with that, though, the board?
Yeah, wait, so is it by a?
So it's just changing.
No, she, I thought she had a comment on this one.
Was that the other one?
Um.
That's thirteen.
Um. Deleted the certified, uh, by a registered, uh, professional engineer.
To the planning board and building commissioner prior to the issuance of the files.
Yes.
Well, so. For the last unit of commercial space, so they may not get a certificate of occupancy on that space. For, you know, if you don't, if you don't, they'll get, if they don't get a C O on that last, on the last unit of their seven units, right, seven units?
Fourteen.
Fourteen units, yeah, I'm sorry, what, I'm sorry about that, yeah, um, the fourteen units with that, so we're just holding back the, the final ASBIL, we're not gonna get the ASBIL.
But the last unit or commercial space and release of any remaining final surety, so that, um.
Oh, and, okay, and the release of the unit.
So then we'd have to get a letter from.
The issuance of.
In regards to the ASBIL.
Last unit, commercial space, and the release of. All right, um.
So, I mean, everything in red is from their attorney, so as long as the board's okay with it, town council didn't have any.
Okay, yeah, and she made comment to the other one, where it was last versus first, but that's fine, I'm fine, she had no issues.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but yeah.
I'm fine with them.
Okay. Twenty-seven.
Is that gone?
Yeah, that one's gone, that's, it seems straightforward, it was, um, yeah, because. This talks about any deficiencies, and this is one that I think we had added in for a specific project, and it doesn't really apply.
Doesn't apply, yeah.
Not necessary, then it would have really remained with a problem.
Right. So twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Any release of the performance guaranteed by the planning board due to substantial completion does not constitute final approval. This basically just, um.
And the, it's not fully completed with. Okay.
Although. We should probably add portion of the performance guarantee, so if, if. So any release of the performance guarantee by the planning board due to. Release of portion of surety does not constitute final approval. Uh, due to substantial completion does not cons, yeah, so.
It says any release of the performance guarantee by the planning board.
Any release.
Due to substantial completion does not constitute final approval. So if we only partially were.
Yeah, so even a portion, so it's, so we wanted to say, um, any release or a portion of as well. For twenty-eight. So if we release a portion of it, it's not saying that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's complete.
You can put that, any release of the performance guarantee, comma, partial or full.
Yeah.
Right.
By the planning board.
Yeah, because I think they discussed the landscaping, if you had to hold some till that was complete. Right, okay, so, twenty, are you okay with that adding? Okay. Twenty-nine. The applicant shall provide proof of recording at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds of this decision and approved site plan, uh, to the planning board prior to start of construction.
So, the, the, um. The question we have there is the site plan recording. You know, the, the plans were drawn as site plans, they're not, they don't meet registry standards for recording, they're not like a Form A or a subdivision plan, so they're, they're really not meant to be recorded plans. We, we do have a block for endorsement by the board on here, but do you typically require applicants to record the site plans at the registry?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Originally, they had a, you had it on a Mylar, and then for forty-three Main Street, you did vote to. Allow them to, but they just had so many Mylar, instead of having them do so many Mylars, they were able to just do it.
Mylar, we're, we're fine with a Mylar, but submitted to the board, but the question is, does it get recorded at the registry? Because our plans are in color.
Yeah.
They got, they got recorded, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so you're okay with that?
Well, I mean, like I said, with, the plans weren't drawn to meet registry standards, but, um, they're, they're in color, they, they don't, you know, they want black and white plans, you know, so.
Oh, they're in color?
My, yeah, plan, most modern plans are in color, but the registry still records black and white copies, so.
And I think we're just changing it to replace accompanying plan with approved site plan, to make sure you're recording, you know, recording and approved.
Is it a problem?
It's just standard.
No, I, I don't know, I don't know that the registry records, you need a recording block on the plan, on each plan, they're not, they're not meant to be recorded, I'm unsure how.
Yeah, I, I.
What other plans.
Never heard, like, but Kathy, you know better, I guess.
Well, like you said, it's a new, new process, but we definitely had, got the Mylars, and for the forty-three Main Street, they did discuss that, and you did vote to let them do a paper copy.
Right.
But you can't, you can't record a paper copy, not the registry.
They said, they said they could, that I don't know.
Yeah, paper copy can't be recorded, you need a registry block, you need a statement that it complies with the registry standards, and, and they, they don't. The text has to be all a certain size.
It wasn't just the Form A, Kathy, that got recorded, right, obviously, it was the site.
Right, and I'm not saying it was recorded, but that was the intent, that they were gonna go record it.
I can.
But if it doesn't, if it's not a lot, it's not a lot, right, like, does that make sense? Well, I mean, because I don't wanna redraft our plans to, to, you know, meet registry standards.
I don't want you to either.
It's like, yeah, no, you don't, no.
All right, well, so there seems to be an issue with.
All right, so.
Three to four.
Can we circle back to what?
Three, eleven, thirteen, and twenty-nine.
Three, I mean.
I mean, we're back to ASBILs or.
I'm. I'm kind of okay with the final ASBIL plan, but it's up, I don't know, it's up to the rest of the board. That's mine.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, to me, it's kinda like kicking the can down the road, if there are an issue, are issues found at the end, then. It's on them, I guess.
Jack?
Yeah.
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 What?
Yep.
Okay.
So warned.
Yeah.
It gets picked up, as it goes, though, so I understand, I appreciate it, though.
And then eleven and thirteen.
All right, so that, that, that was the one we're going back between, like, which one gets in, which one stays out?
Because it's occupancy permit and building permit, and, um, installation of the various.
So, le- eleven would seem applicable to like a subdivision, where they're putting in a roadway, they have to install the road, the drainage, whatever they don't install, they wanna make sure the road gets built, it gets final pavement, they typically hold sureties or bonds.
Very good point on that, so.
When you're building a commercial site, and it's all built together, it's like, it's like saying. When you're building a commercial site and it's all built together, it's like, it's like saying that you have to install the septic and do all the, do all the landscaping and put in a driveway to a residential house before you go and get a building permit for the house.
Yeah, I think that, so, you know, obviously when you're putting in a road and it's a reason why they hold surety if the drainage in and everything like that, because they're gonna be, you guys are releasing lots, and these are gonna be sold to unsuspecting homeowners or builders. So in this aspect, the way I see this is, once we get an approval here, now I'm able to get my final set of plans from the guys and submit for the building department for approval for a building permit, so the bank will now work with us. Without any of that, the bank doesn't work, would you?
I mean.
I kinda see their point.
I know, but the problem is that we can't hold the occupancy for that, so.
So what?
But the ASBelt, right?
Sorry.
Yeah. You have to view, review the ASBelt and approve the ASBelt before I can get the occupancy. So that checks that balance right there.
So what number thirteen was in there, right? So our, our original number thirteen said, stormwater management system shall be.
Right.
Installed.
Install, I can't tell what, what they changed, deleted, so.
Well, we're, we're fine with your original, the stormwater management system shall be functional. Soil stabilized, riprap installed, basins, grass, et cetera, prior to an oxygenated permit being issued for the structures.
No problem.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Well, and then you also had the last unit.
Yeah, well. No, we're gonna get rid of everything in thirteen, we're gonna stick with your original number thirteen, if we get rid of number eleven.
Eleven is not possible.
Ten and eleven, that means, good. Do you want to go review this?
So they wanna just go back to number thirteen that we originally had?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay.
What's the, I'm trying to find the original.
Yeah, I hope you understand exactly what we're talking about with that, like. I think it's more meant for road construction. If it was like doing a whole industrial park or something like that, you know?
Yeah, or just like residential road.
Both structures. So the stormwater management system shall be functional, soil stabilized, riprap installed, basins, grass, et cetera, obviously it's.
It's no.
Right, that's some surface.
Yeah.
Prior to an occupancy permit being issued for the structures, for the building structures?
Yeah, that is, that's, that's all obvious. That's, that's no problem, right?
Yes.
All right. Because that means I have to have pavement down, all that, so all that would need to be done, so.
So eleven is out, thirteen is in.
I think, I, and I'll say, well, we probably have to like, maybe, um. Be more, not descriptive, but something, or maybe, again, maybe we have to look at what, ones for, for roads and ones for private, I understand what, I, no, so, when you said that, it makes more sense with.
We have a set of conditions for a subdivision versus site plan, so this, it's not our subdivision.
Yeah. Did, did the word occupancy permit change your building permit? Because that would make sense.
That's what made sense to us.
Actually, because that other one, oh, I thought the other one was from a subdivision.
I think that's just.
It might have been a combination.
Yeah.
Because we had to go.
Possibly. Okay, all right, um, so three is resolved, eleven, thirteen is resolved, and the last one is twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah, because, because we were talking about the recording of the site plan.
Oh, yeah, um, ah, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm fearful that they won't allow or above.
Well, I mean, they, you do have to, I, I would have to put on a registry block, I would have to put on a signature that complies. There's certain text heights, it's only black and white, you know, things, it's just, our plans weren't drawn to be recorded.
So which ones get recorded? The ones that we signed, right? Are supposed to be the ones, the ones we signed?
So again, this is like a new thing. So I know, um, like an A and R and a subdivision, because you're dividing the land, that has to stay in the registry, like forever.
Yeah.
Um, but this has been new, and like, I didn't know, we've had it, them do it on a Mylar, but because of the scope of how large forty-three Main Street was, they asked if they could do a regular plan and said that they could record a regular plan.
No, I mean, but they, but they do have to, but we.
So site plan recording with the registry of deeds is a new, altogether, is altogether new?
For this board, yes.
Okay.
For this what?
I've.
Us board, okay.
I've done hundreds of site plans and I've never recorded one at the registry. From, from everything, from targets to restaurants to. Shopping centers, shopping.
I'd have to say, I've never heard.
I, I, yeah.
What was done in the past?
I'm sorry?
What was done in the past?
Like I said, this is a new, new requirement.
But they used to still submit a Mylar for a site plan review.
Yes, like for five Harding, they did a Mylar.
I have no problem submitting a Mylar, I will submit a Mylar to you guys and get it signed and have the signature block and make copies and digital copies, I just can't record it at the registry.
Okay.
Without, without significant changes to the plans. And, you know.
Typically, the Mylar, isn't that usually what's been recorded?
For five Harding, yes, that's what was done.
They recorded with the registry, did they give us a, did they give us the proof of that?
I don't believe, I, I'm not sure of that, because they haven't, uh, started that project yet.
Isn't the plan that you guys endorse, that you sign, isn't that like what holds us to building?
Yeah, I mean, and you'll have a copy in your records, we'll have a copy in our records, you'll obviously keep the copy, there'll be a copy at the building department, it'll be.
But so, I mean, we have to stay consistent, and even though this is new, but the re, the reason we have these new implementations in place is because there have been issues in the past, so we have to rectify those issues. And so if we're requiring another site plan review that we've already just gone through this past year, and they had to do it, then it, we shouldn't be going back and now saying, okay, now you don't have to.
I don't know if it's a requirement.
I agree, but like I said, I've done hundreds of site plans in different communities, including this one, and never recorded, never recorded a plan.
You would have probably did it differently if we'd known that, does that make sense at all?
Yeah, it'd be drawn like a subdivision plan, there'd be registry blocks and recording spaces and blank registry recordings.
We can't table this, right? Because, I'm just gonna say, asking the attorney question.
I mean.
At this point?
We could, we could make it an approval with the edits that we've discussed this evening.
Yep.
And we could include twenty-nine for, we could, we could just say that, you know, we have pending, uh, review from town council on this.
And then.
And we'll just ask her, because now you're, you're saying that, um. Because even, like. Y- your attorney came back and said the applicant shall provide proof of recording at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds of this decision and approved site plan, like, that was what he added. So now you're saying.
Well, yeah, that, that, that was the attorney, not me, I, I, I didn't, I didn't think we were gonna put the site plan, I thought that the recording of the decision, I completely understand, which is common.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Because, like, my confusion is that, you know, your attorney sent this back.
Yep.
And all I thought that we were, we were just changing it from saying, you know, accompanying plan of land to approved site plan, with some of these deletions.
I mean.
Um. Or actually, that was from the other, the other one. But, yeah, so twenty-nine was just a change in, uh, company plan of land to approved site plan, so.
Yeah.
So, um. Uh, so our town council hasn't even reviewed the fact that you're, you're saying you don't wanna do this.
Well, I don't wanna hold things up, so. I mean, I'm fine, put it in there, we'll, we'll make them recordable, but.
Okay. Okay, so then twenty-nine is okay.
As noted.
With the change that, to the approved site plans as opposed to accompanying plan of land.
So, Madam J, it's not specifically in the bylaw, so then that would be your decision.
Right, okay. But like I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take this out, because they're saying they don't. Like I said, because their attorney sent it as this, and this is what town council is reviewing.
Attorney's not an engineer, he doesn't know what typically records plans.
Like, obviously, the decision's not a problem, I guess. Again, I don't know enough about it, but I, I defer Bob.
Yeah. I mean.
Well.
It's not the fee to record it, guys, it's just if it's, it's the fee to redo the whole set.
Process.
I mean.
But at least you have everything, and if, if it's just a matter of adding some signature blocks and areas, no?
It's, it's not, it's text size and, and all the plans, it's the border on the plans, it's colors on the plans, it's, um. It's, you know, you, it has to be a signature block, you have to put a, uh, it has to be an eighty-one X statement saying that there's no new lines or ways. There's a lot of stuff that has to go if you're gonna record a plan at the registry that's not typically on the site plans. Like I've said, I've done them hundreds of times over thirty-something years, and I've never once recorded a site plan.
We've only had one other, one other, one other applicant do this, and we don't know if.
And he might not even have done it.
Yeah, he may not have done it yet, because when it gets to the registry and they kick it back and say, I can't record this plan.
Okay.
So we could do a conditional approval, and if twenty, so if we send it to council with the question about this item, that they just want it taken off altogether?
Decision. We'll, we'll, we'll record the decision.
They're just gonna remove the, the plan.
Record the decision, it references the plan, the plan will be put on file.
Okay, so, shall provide proof of recording of this decision, but you don't wanna include the approved site plan.
Yes, please, that's, that's.
So that's what you're looking, questioning. So can we send one question to town council, and depending on what she, so if, if, are you okay with it?
Either way, whatever she says, whatever town council says.
If she says yes, we should.
Abide by.
You will abide by it, okay, so determined, determined by the, um, opinion of, provided by town council on this twenty-nine. Would someone like to make a motion? I don't think so, because, no, Kathy already has.
Just go do more.
One more time, are you serious?
No, he's joking, look at these.
No, I said, was there anyone's question? We, we, we bounce back and forth.
No.
I'm fine, I'm, I'm looking at it. I'll, I'll make a motion to conditionally approve ten Harding Street, um, conditions.
With the edits as.
With the edits as noted.
Discussed.
Discussed thus far.
Yeah.
Um.
With the question of twenty-nine?
With one question, um, awaiting town council's review.
On twenty-nine?
On twenty, number twenty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And I for one, and I'm excited to see what you folks are gonna do with that site.
You guys are awful to deal with, don't come back.
All right, sorry.
I'm joking, that's a joke.
The next project will be, uh, we got much later.
What's that? Next what?
The next project will be that much later.
Well, so the thing is, we actually have new, new forms. Oh, but we, we didn't get one for subdivision, huh? Site plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do, so we have a new form, so hopefully that'll help.
Yeah, next one, yeah.
Have a good night.
It's your attorney.
All right, where am I?
Always action-packed for you two.
My question is, on twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
We wrote that, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'd like to.
Based on whose input?
Hold on, wait.
Hold on.
I make a motion to close the hearing for ten Harding Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna ask, do we close it? Because I don't remember closing it before.
That's right.
Do, do they have to be present or whatever?
All right.
You got a lot of.
Town council. We'll, we'll say, can I get an amen?
Yeah.
All right.
Forty-three Main Street was easier.
I know. That's so true.
This is being recorded, okay, let's go.
All right, number six, reorganization of the board. Does anyone else have any trust in being chair?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to nominate Michelle, to, Michelle McEckern.
All right, we have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. All in favor? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we retain John as vice chair, right?
Second. Oh, a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I'm telling you.
Now I'll do it next year.
Next year.
I'll do it next.
All right, approve the January ninth, twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes. That was a long set of minutes, Kathy, holy moly.
Yeah, I know, it was like, uh, long beast.
Gee whiz, I can't wait till you do it tonight. I didn't have any edits, did anyone else?
I did not have any edits.
Okay.
That was good. Um.
All right, did somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
I mean, we, uh, approve the minutes of January ninth, second, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative update. All right, we have thirteen Main Street, update slash release funds, possible vote, Kathy, would you like to take that one?
Oh, second packet.
So, so we had, we had Apex out there, they reviewed, there was a checklist, a punch list, there was still some items shown. Um, they came back with some items that they wanna have pictures of instead of, because they, they fulfilled their contract with us, so instead of extending that contract.
Right.
They were okay with pictures, so Kathy.
Yes. So the board could, um, make a conditional motion that you'll accept, uh, approve releasing their performance guarantee once you get the word back from Apex that everything is okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the release of, uh, fund, you said?
Yep.
A fund for thirteen Main Street upon, um, review by.
Apex.
Apex.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, rules and regs, discuss items to be included in Sherpa's review, that's right, okay, so, um. Sherpa was gonna meet with us for the kickoff, but they were not able to attend the meeting. Um, but I did say we could discuss it, any items that this board has, um, of concern, that we can send it to them, so they have that guidance to go on. Um, I know one of the items, the main items, I think that we've discussed, is having a two different, um, standards for, uh, private road and roads that wanna be accepted. And so that they know right off the bat, for a road to be accepted, they're gonna have to meet all these criteria from the beginning. And then if, if there's a road that's not gonna be accepted, then they have to understand that it will not be accepted, because they have not conformed to these standards. So I, I know that's a big one, that we wanted to have two sets of, um, of, um, regulations for private way versus public. Kathy, do you have anything that you, for the rules and regs? Because.
Um, just, I think that they should go and look through to see if anything's outdated.
Um, we also, didn't we talk about timeframes? Like, our timeframe is a lot shorter than other timeframes, but I guess that could be a question.
Yep.
Timeframes. Um, just in speaking with the prior town planner, she was saying that other places have longer timeframes rather than ours, and, and we actually.
For?
For, um, like the subdivision approvals, so we, our rules and regs actually said fourteen days, and, but we, our bylaws go by twenty-one.
Yep.
So we actually went through last year, and that was one of those, like, minor edits that we made to update everything to the twenty-one days. Uh, but I think I would like some feedback on timeframes, are these? I mean, knowing the fact that, um, things have been more hectic, there's more requirements, especially at a state level and all those sort of things, like, should those timelines be looked at and, and updated as well? Um, I think we've, we've re, we've reviewed the fee schedule, but the unfortunate thing is, we reviewed it, um, during COVID. And so we know that after COVID, pricing has, prices have gone crazy, so I don't know if fees have also. So the fee schedule is tied with those rules and regs. It, we built it in, we built it into the rules and regs, so even if, I think maybe they should look at the fees to, like, so what, when we had done the last review, we, we took the median, um, home value from Lakeville and compared to towns with a similar median home value. And that, so we went, we looked at those towns, um, like, so a fee review, um, compared.
Surrounding similar towns.
Sim.
Like, like, free town.
Median.
Um.
Home values. Um, is there anything else that you can think of that the rules and regs, um, that we wanna have them really? I, I know the roads was a ma, a major one, and we, oh, the stormwater, we wanna make sure it talks to the stormwater. Um, by law. And. Anything else?
I think we covered it.
Okay, so we have.
Stormwater was a big one, I forgot about, yeah.
So outdated overall. All right, so two, uh, the pri- All right, so two, uh, the private versus public ways.
Yep.
Uh, just check for overall, anything outdated, um, look at the timeframes. And the fees. And the stormwater for compatibility. Okay.
I think that'd be at least a good start. What's that, five items?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, yeah. Kathy, do you want me to send this over to Taylor or do you wanna?
Either. That's an easy one, I can do that.
Okay, all right. All right, so the next one is signs memo. So these, these are, last two things are just the memos that we've already approved and have already been sent. So I just wanted to keep kind of a breast of these items and, and maybe just follow up to make sure that we get, um, we get some sort of feedback, because, um, one is signs and the other one is a consultant memo, um.
One, one quick thing on the signs to, uh, uh, you mentioned that signs aren't allowed to advertise businesses that are not on that site.
Yep.
And the building at Bedford in Rhode Island.
Right.
Is still doing it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that, I believe is a satellite office. Oh, is it? Yes. The landscaping company? Yes. Um, there was other signage that was brought up too, um, that's being reviewed.
Ballers around.
Yeah.
Same ones that were on Captain's Way, that I've seen more of their QR codes, other.
One on twenty-nine and seventy-nine.
Say that again?
One on seventy-nine there. Go seventy-nine as it goes towards.
It's gone.
That, that's, yeah, that's no longer there, yeah.
That was gone like the day after we talked about it. After your, your pictures came out.
Oh, yeah. Um. I looked, I looked. That one has to stay because it's still in the phase project.
Right, which is a shame because it, if.
It is, I, I, you know, you can make the recommendation that they either replace it.
Back from the road, though?
Oh, I don't know if it's ten feet back. Well, and I think that was put in, and I could be wrong. I believe that sign was put in crips, it, it had to have been.
It's gotta be like twenty years old, right?
At, at least twenty years old, because I think since twenty-twelve, maybe, that sign's been there.
It looks like it's been twenty years old.
Twelve years old.
Yeah. It was before the other phases. It was part of the older project, they, you know?
So do you wanna keep these two item, well, I, I wanna keep an item, an eye on, obviously the consult, so the we can keep the sign memo on, cause maybe if, if people have more, um, items that they wanna address, we can address it at a later date, but let's, do we wanna keep it off of the next, next meeting or, or push it off to next month?
I, I think, um, we might want to have the zoning enforcement officer, um, weigh in, uh, cause I, I don't know in terms of if number two is taking care of the, the lights and so forth.
So the memo does.
That, that.
I think it did ask, yeah, would appreciate an update, so hopefully we'll get an update.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's fine.
The, and then the, the flags, I don't know if we wanna use the word flags, maybe. Was it flags or banners there?
I would say banners.
I know that, that the resident kept saying flags, I was like, yeah, I almost was like, what kind of like.
Yeah.
Don't want to, they can't fly a flag.
No, no, no.
Right, but it wasn't like a.
No, I know.
Um, American flag.
No, I know.
No, no, no.
Vertical banner.
Right, right.
Yeah. Advertising banners.
Better description.
My contribution of the evening.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, just, just another quick update. So, uh, this evening before our meeting, I did, uh, go over, attend the budget hearing with the SLAC board.
Thank you.
I brought a copy, you're welcome. I brought a copy of the memo and I did hand it out to the new, uh, SLAC board members. I gave the copy to the Fincom. I didn't have enough for all of them. I was just thinking, you know, five for the SLAC board, but kinda spread them out so they could take a look at it. Um, so the the conversation about the consultant will be on Monday. Um, it's too late to post for Monday for all of us to go, but I'll attend. Um, and, but we did discuss with the budget hearing, um, depending on how long that planner, um, position is open, that we may be looking at our twenty-six budget, which starts in July, so that's only a few months away.
Yep.
Um, where we might have to look at, and, and the town accountant said that he would be able to break it down into a different line, you know? We'd have the salary and then the expense. And then at fall town meeting, if we do have a town planner at that point, he could roll it back and, and make that change at fall town meeting. So, um, Andrew, you know, said that we could work on it. Um. But hopefully, the, the discussion about the consultant will be Monday. So.
And the, does, is there a job description that needs to be written up?
It's already up.
It's already up, I'm sorry, okay.
The existing job description, it's already been posted.